I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, roll call please.
Dan.
Here.
Wanda.
Here.
Don.
Here.
Joe.
Here.
Here, and we have a quorum present. Item number three, does any commissioner have a reason to abstain for a financial or a non-financial conflict of interest?
I do not.
I do not.
No. Item number four is approval of the agenda. We will be deleting item nine, which is the PUD second reading, and item sixteen, which is the executive session for poor relief. Are there any other changes to the agenda?
Move approval of the agenda.
Second.
I have a motion by Kettering, second by Fox, to approve the amended agenda. Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed nay. Motion carries five zero. Now is the time for public comment. Would any citizen care to make a public comment? Come on up, sir, the microphone's already on for you.
Well, Johnson, I'm sure you've missed me because I haven't been here to make public comments. Anyway, several little things come to mind, and nothing earth-shattering. First off, I want to thank Don and Wanda for making it to the families, feeding families. I heard several real nice comments from citizens of the county in the area that stated that at least somebody seems to care about the farmers. All right, that being said, we're going to jump completely over to a serious health and safety hazard. Cedar trees. Do you realize that underneath a nice dense growth of cedar trees, you got dirt? When you have a torrential downpour, the water goes and the dirt, the soil goes right with the water into the waterways, tributaries, and rivers. And why people are allowed to let their pastures get completely covered with cedar trees? I do not know. Because it's, if you're, if you're actually trying to make a living with the land, you're shooting yourself in the foot. The other thing about it is, has anybody noticed all of the wildfires throughout the United States this year? There's a lot of them. Go out by the lake. What happens out there on a hot, dry August day when we have a forty mile an hour wind? In the cedar trees and the needles underneath and all the dead branches catch on fire? There's not going to be enough fire trucks in the county to stop it. And it's, it's something you really should pay attention to, and I guess the thing that brought it to my attention, I heard an excerpt from the South Dakota State University apparently has got a step-by-step plan on how to burn the cedars off to save the pastures and to reduce, reduce the risk. But, and the guy that was telling about it was visiting with the fact that it could be February, when you have the right day with the right wind, with the right humidity, and everything is perfect to burn. But there are some county, and I don't remember the name of the county, but there was like thirty percent of the county was covered with cedar trees. They're, unless they're in a shelter belt, they're, they're a weed. And they're in every township, they're out in the road ditches, they're along corners, they are a safety hazard. Something just to keep in the back of your mind. The other thing is, what happened to the growth rate in Yaton County? When they did the redistricting for voting, they had to give us half of Clay County to make us populated enough. And I don't know, I haven't checked into it, but I found out that there is what, Clay County had twice the growth rate that Yaton County did? Number one, they're doing something right. Number two, we're doing something wrong. Because I can't see where Clay County has any great advantage over Yaton County in what they can offer. You may want to keep that in the back of your mind. The other thing I had was I have worked out in the lake area. I worked out there in a campground this year, and this sewer system thing out there needs to be addressed because the there was raw sewage on top of the ground. And I'll be quite honest, from a standpoint in health and standpoint way, way, or I would just soon go into my hog barn and drink out of a fountain after a pig drank out of it, is go drink out of a sandpoint well up by the lake. Because you have a sewer here, you've got the well over here. And the soil out there has already been stated that it's way too coarse and porous for septic systems. And we just keep handling them out. And we know there's a problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments today? All right, public comment is closed. So that is item four. Item five is approval of the November second minutes. The only comment I had was, it was noted in there that I arrived at seven thirty, which I believe is accurate, but it should be noted after Julie Elk finished speaking.
I, I had something on action, two one five zero seven Z. We talked about modifying a conditional use permit. I think that should state, we approved the conditional, because it was a new conditional use permit. He did have one prior to that, but he went through the process again. And if we look in Article nineteen of Board Adjustment, the Board of Adjustment powers are that they can hear requests for variances, conditional uses, and then, and appeals. I just, I, I, I don't feel that we can even necessarily modify conditional use permit. I don't think that's what we did. We had him go through the whole process. So I guess I would say is, we approved the conditional use permit.
The motion verbatim was to modify the conditional use permit that we voted on.
I don't, is that even a thing? Can we, can we modify conditional use permits?
Fast forward zero.
I, but I did mention that there when we had further discussion about it. I mean, do you recall that?
Yeah, I do. There were two of them. And I know you talked about the first one, and I know that second motion was specifically to modify it.
I just think we need to be careful because that's going to get us in trouble. And it, to me, it wasn't necessarily a modification of a CUP. He went through the whole process, correct? He had a new CUP, he went through the planning commission, and he went to the Board of Adjustment. What's the difference between that and any other CUP? He had a new one, and we've done that before with other people when they changed their plan, but this is the first time we've called it modifying conditional use permit. And I, that may have been the motion that was stated, but it was a new conditional use permit that superseded the old one. So I guess we can do what we want to do on that, but we're going to get ourselves in trouble if we start calling and modifying conditional use permit.
Gary.
Well, that probably would need a legal interpretation, but I mean, you did, he did change the site plan, so it's kind of semantics whether he modified the old site plan or whether he, he started new like Dan says.
You know, Deb, what, what would you say? To me, modifying a conditional use permit would maybe be not going through the whole process. But he went through, though, he, he went through the process, got his conditional use permit, then he changed, and he came through, and he went through the whole new process again.
All I can say is we have to go by what the motion wants for the benefit.
Yeah.
Can't change what the.
Yeah, you can't change it now.
Well, I think in the future we should be real careful about this, and if it's a new conditional use permit, we just call it a conditional use permit. And go from there.
Any other comments before entertaining a motion to approve the minutes?
Although approval of the minutes.
Second.
So I have a motion by Kettering, second by Fox, to approve the minutes for November second. Further discussion? All in fa, oh.
With that notation that you brought up.
Yes, yep. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed nay. Oh. Motion carries four to one. So at this point, if we feel that needs to be corrected, would we need to go through a whole nother hearing? Or just a hearing at, just a hearing here? To go and correct that motion? It, just here.
I get, my, my concern is, again, the section nineteen oh nine, nowhere does it say the Board of Adjustment has the power to modify a conditional use. We have the power to grant it. I, I just am concerned because I think that's going to get us into legal trouble.
I would agree with Gary, though. I think it's semantics because to, to grant him a new one, then he's got to cancel his, or we have to revoke it or something. So it's just doing it all in one step rather than having two, two hearings, one to cancel it and one to.
Well, I don't think, do you ever, I don't know if we've ever canceled a conditional use permit. I think a new one just supersedes it. So, yeah, I, I, I don't recall in the last seven years ever canceling one, a new one supersedes the old one.
So that would have to be, you'd have to decide and then you're actually not.
An agenda.
So is there a consensus to leave as is, or do we need to take further action to correct this?
Okay, as is.
I'm sorry, what did you say?
I'm okay with it as it is, but.
I'm okay with that. Maybe we should just be a little more mindful.
Don, are you good? Okay, then we will move forward with no, no further action on that then. Item number six, we have new wine and cider license. We'll take the new one first.
Do we ever require these people to show up?
They, they are told the.
What?
They, they are told that they're on the agenda.
I don't know that I've seen anybody show up yet.
What?
I don't know that I've ever seen anybody show up.
Really?
Maybe for a new one I have.
I would be, I would think they'd be interested.
But not the renewals.
Renewals. So this new one is for a retail on-off sale wine and cider. Owner name Pioneer Spirit, business name Flatlanders in Gayville.
They currently have
Yes.
on sale liquor.
Where are they located?
Is that Monpaus?
Right, right on Highway fifty there.
Okay.
Formerly known as Monpaus.
So, I will ask for public comment on this. There being no public comment, we'll close public comment on that one. Bring it back to the Commission for. Oh, thank you, Deb.
We can do the regular licenses.
It's six fifteen. Oh.
Well, aren't you the arbiter of the clock?
We will pause for forty-five seconds. Thank you. Gosh, I thought I was like, you know, ten minutes off or something. I was, gosh. So we'll, we will wait a little bit, and then next we will look at the renewals, and those do occur. I did notice in the renewal.
Question about the renewals.
Yes.
Does Mr. Hebda ever use his license? It says it's active.
I have no idea. And we don't.
How do we find out? Can we inquire of the sales tax people? Department of Revenue? Because it seems to me that there's a statute that says if you don't use it, you lose it.
Do they collect different sales tax off liquor then? So versus all the other sales tax for food and?
I would have to ask them that to know for sure.
Yeah, I don't, I have no idea.
I got six fifteen, so I'll make a, I'll make, if, if it's okay.
Yes, sir.
I'll make a motion to approve the, the Pioneer Spirits LLC.
The what?
The Pioneer Spirits LLC.
Application.
Application.
Second.
So I have a motion by Clemish, second by Healy, to approve the retail wine and cider for Pioneer Spirit LLC. So now I will ask for public comment. There's no public comment. Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed nay. Motion carries five zero. So now we have a list of liquor license renewals. The only thing I did have a observation on was most of them were fifteen hundred, and one of them was eleven hundred. Is there like, is there a reason I'm not picking up on?
Well, one's a thousand.
A thousand.
Yeah.
A thousand.
What?
That's the one out at the marina, isn't it?
Uh, yes, it's for.
Don't they have some kind of a break because it's on state land? Or no?
I, that was.
They just have on sale.
Yeah.
And the liquor is off sale.
Oh, so that's a different price.
They're not on and off.
Well, then actually, there's two, because Glen Ridge Golf Course is eleven hundred.
See, and, yeah, and I, I think I understood the, the thousand dollar because it was a different type of license, but the eleven hundred.
Mayfield is eleven hundred.
Yeah, and that one's for retail liquor, whereas everybody else at retail liquor had well, that one's eleven hundred. Yeah, so I, I don't know, and maybe I'm out of my league on asking difference in prices on those, but.
Do you want to do them one at a time? Sherry? Pardon? Do you want to do each liquor?
Use it separately or as? Usually, just one motion, usually just one motion.
Sorry.
Are there any other questions on the applications or concerns?
My only question was obviously, does Mr. Hebda use it?
No, no, I, I don't know if we can have the county sheriff go up there? Or, you know, a deputy to check on it? That's the only way I would think.
Anybody would know, but the, unless the sales tax people would know. Does he still do the pumpkins and the apples and? Well, maybe I'll find out.
There you go.
Take it through.
Well, I'll ask for public comment on these. Close public comment with none. And at this time, we can entertain a motion to approve them.
Have we got an answer on?
I'm sorry?
Have we got an answer on the different prices or?
We're trying, we're trying, we'll have it before the.
Should we?
We can, we can wait, we can approve them as is, or we can wait for the answer. If you'd like to wait, we can move on to item seven.
Well, some of these, like, Fleegs looks fine, it's fifteen hundred bucks. And I guess the Captain Orange is fifteen hundred. They have to do a food and Marina's fifteen hundred.
I bet that's it, so.
Yeah, so, I mean, we.
Cottonwood has food.
Oh, why don't, why don't we do it that way? When I make a motion to approve the renewal of all liquor license that have paid a fifteen hundred dollar fee.
Can we just wait?
Yeah, why don't we just wait?
Sorry.
Oh, you're no fun.
So while we're waiting on that, let's go ahead, and I, item number seven, let's just go ahead and do claims. Were there any question on the claims?
I'd move approval of the claims. Second.
So I have a motion by Healy, second by Kettering, to approve the claims as presented. Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed nay. Motion carries five zero. Together, the auditor treasurer report and pool cash reports.
Move approval. Second.
Motion by Healy, second by Clemish, to approve the auditor treasurer, treasurer pool cash. Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed nay. Motion carries five zero. Authorization to advertise for budget supplement.
And this is, can I give you a list of them?
Right. Yep.
Napa Junction, jail building, and mental handicap. They're short and they're much by that much, and we do have contingency, but that's more for the departments.
Correct.
If we need any.
Do you need a motion for each item?
No, just to advertise for supplements.
I'd move to advertise for budget supplements as presented.
Second.
The motion by Healy, second by Kettering, to approve to advertise for budget supplement as presented.
Are they just, or, I'm sorry, we in further discussion?
I was going to say discussion, so go ahead.
Sorry, is there? What's the reason? I, I know the jail building, probably COVID and everything else, but the other two? Are they just financial hardships, or what, I guess what's the cause?
That jail building doesn't have a budget anyway, but we'd budget it next year.
Okay.
Per state auditor. The Napa Junction, that's just a, there's a budget in there, but the budget is, is um, an estimation, you know, when we do budgets. So that's why we have to budget them, and then mental handicap is that one bill that we pay.
Okay.
Is one bill?
No, no, that one we just.
Oh, okay. I thought you meant one bill.
No.
Any other questions? All right, we have a motion to approve. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed nay. Motion carries five zero, and the last on this is to surplus some CPR mannequins.
And Steve told me, they're from, like he said in his letter, from two thousand four and two thousand six, and they're not up to code or, so, and then I would put in the motion if you approve that they would like to donate them to a responder organization, organization.
Like fire department or something?
Whoever, whoever contacts him.
I would move to approve the surplusing of eight CPR mannequins that are not up to AHA CPR code.
In that motion, should we just authorize Steve to donate them to any responder organizations, or, or, or should we just leave it, just surplus them? Is he going to have to come back and get authorization to give them away?
I think if you do that, just to surplus and then to let him donate them to a
Okay.
responder organization.
Would you add that authorize him to donate, and then I'll second it, and then he doesn't have to come back to us if?
Well, he's not here anyway.
Well, but.
Like everybody else that wants something from us.
He couldn't.
Okay, I will amend my motion.
Well, you don't have to amend it, just restate your motion. Just.
I will restate, I will withdraw my other one and restate my motion to approve the EMS administrators' request to surplus eight CPR mannequins that are not up to AHA code, and to allow him to donate them to first responder or other organizations.
Second.
So motion by Fox, second by Clemish, to surplus mannequins and allow for donation to a first responder organization. Further discussion?
I just like to say, I mean, I really got to hand it to Steve to be thinking about how to still utilize this stuff, and so the job on his part, so.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed nay. Motion carries five zero. So we'll keep stepping forward until we get an answer on the liquor licenses. So we are at number eight, which is Mr. Solatchek.
Mike.
And we're right on time.
Well, first I have on the agenda is surplus Caterpillar one forty H, it's a motor grater. We have the new motor grater we ordered, you guys approved of back in May or June. Anyways, that'll be arriving in January, so we need to get rid of the machine.
How much is it worth? Give me an idea.
Um, I will get a updated appraisal on it.
I'm sorry?
I will get an updated appraisal.
Ballpark thirty thousand, sixty thousand?
Probably closer to the sixty, sixty-five thousand range. But with, with the way prices are with iron now, I feel maybe I should just have Butler come down and reappraise it.
Are you planning on putting it on auction or?
We do sealed bids for sure with a reserve, and if we do not get what we have for on a reserve on it, trade in is, then we can trade it in, but we have to.
Yeah, surplus.
We have to surplus it and advertise it before we can trade in.
I'd move to approve the request to surplus a one forty H Caterpillar motor grater.
Second.
So motion by Fox, second by Kettering, to surplus a Caterpillar motor grater. Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed nay. Motion carries five zero.
Highway fifty-two bike path bid. So I put together the bids for the asphalt and for the concrete approaches. Guess just looking for permission to go out to bid for this project for twenty twenty-two. I don't know if you guys flipped through it much, but the asphalt itself, the due date I have specified in here on June thirtieth, so would try to hit that before the fourth. And then the concrete approaches would be done after that, and I got a due date of April or August. Something here. August fifth. So give them about a month. So.
Move approval of the bike path bid.
Second.
Motion by Healy, second by Clemish, to approve.
You're just advertising.
Just advertising.
To advertise for a bike path bid. Further discussion? All in.
Who second that, I'm sorry.
Clemish. So all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed nay. Motion carries.
We still have a grant for that one or?
We have, we do have a grant for that, yeah.
And that's like eighty, twenty, again, like the first half, and then once that's done, that'll be basically come.
Yeah, the whole thing will be complete. Oh. I lost my train of thought there. All right.
Speed limit.
That's not next, yeah, next is the speed limit. But back in August, I think we talked about, we got the flashy lights up and all that. So this would be for the forty-five mile an hour speed zone heading south towards the cemetery north of Gayville. So this would be for the forty-five mile an hour speed zone heading south towards the cemetery north of Gayville. I guess as soon as this would get approved, we could put up the signs.
So is it gonna be forty-five both ways or forty-five just going south, fifty-five going north?
It already is going north out of town. So this would be just to get it sooner before the curve because right where the, I have it marked out for the forty-five sign, that's where the fifty-five sign is going north.
Makes sense. I moved to approve, approve the speed limit resolution to reduce the speed on the curve from fifty-five to forty-five.
Second.
So motion by Fox, second by Kettering to approve the resolution for reducing speed on four hundred and fifty-first street. Just north of Gayville. Further discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed nay. Motion carries five zero.
There's little yellow signs underneath the curve sign that do the suggested speed, so I wouldn't recommend doing forty-five around the curve yet.
What's the suggested?
I don't remember, it's like thirty-five or something, but. Last on, I have on their profile milling discussion. So earlier last Monday, we had Loisa Construction come down north of Joe substation there, there's a bridge had ru- roughly four to five inches of asphalt on it. We had them mill that off and taper back into the roadway. Turned out pretty good. Anyways, we got in a discussion about profile milling Walston Road where we ended asphalt this year. Just thinking of possibly if we would do from where we ended to Old Fifty, so that'd be eight miles. And that's not, when, when profile milling does not mean full depth, it means pretty much take an inch, inch and a half off, you're knocking all the highs off, making the lows so they're not as deep. So therefore, when you're paving, to do it the absolute correctly, put a leveling mat down and then put a top mat on top of it while we're going with one mat right now. We're just doing a leveling mat on what we are doing, you know, what we done this year. Long term, we'll get a better ride out of it if by doing this profile milling and we will use less asphalt, we should use less asphalt by doing this also because we're not correcting as much. Now, is that gonna make paving cheaper? Probably not. It'll be close to washing. But I still feel there will be some expense into it. We have figured out here approximately for the eight miles would be, if we did an inch, it'd be forty-three thousand. Inch and a half would be sixty-four thousand to have them do that. Right now, this year, we're on average around that seventy thousand a mile, just in asphalt. So.
So one inch versus inch and a half?
I would rather shoot for just the one inch.
One inch is what you recommend?
So on the one inch, so like this year when we were paving, there's a lot of places where your slope of the road should be at, you know, two, two is where they normally want it, two, two and a half, you know? Well, there was places where the slope was probably anywhere from three and a half to almost five. So that's, you're getting thick on that outside white line. This would help eliminate some of that. A lot of waste would be.
And the tread marks in there and the little cracks would be leveler when you got done too.
I think one thing on Walston Road specifically is it's got very steep ditches that aren't much wider than what the road is. And so what was what was paved this year has a significant drop. Off the edge of the. Off the edge, so if, if someone were to drop a wheel off of that to come correct and get back on the road, could be dangerous. So I think that would help.
This would definitely help that situation.
And it's got a lot of depth and old asphalt anyway.
Right.
So taking a little chunk off the top versus if it only had two inches of asphalt right now, it'd be a problem.
Right.
So this road is a good candidate for trying this process.
So they don't wanna post a bond?
Th- this is just a quote. I, this is.
Well, I, I get that, but they don't want to basically ensure that they won't, that they'll get it done and they won't cause damage?
Well, there's always a risk of some damage. And when I say that, you know, I don't know if, what, I don't know if you remember Walston Road a couple of years ago, but it was full of potholes. Some of that will come through, you know, because we're milling off that inch. So some of them spots were an inch and a half, two inches, well, that will show back up in places, which that'll get fixed right away. If we, when we mill this, if we would profile mill this, I would plan on paving it like ASAP.
But you're not asking us to approve this tonight. You're just introducing our, the concept, so.
Trying to plant the seed.
Next year because, you know.
If it's a possibility.
And there was a question, they did, Luiza had time to do it this fall, but to do it this fall, we're opening up that road that has a chip seal on it to get water in it over the winter, so it made much more sense, even though the price is probably gonna go up a little bit in the spring.
Right.
But the, the risk to do more damage to the road to open those up, what, we didn't feel was worth it in the end.
Well, and then striping and.
Yep, exactly.
So the, I've been working with concrete materials here. What I'm trying to do is work out a deal to where the millings would get hauled off, they'd get hauled straight to the asphalt plant and we could work out a deal for a discount price off of our asphalt for that stretch of road.
Recycling.
Recycling.
If we have a road that has shoulder problems, I mean, would that be an option?
To save them, you mean?
Well, yeah. I, I, is it gonna be worth it to save them and then use them when we need them or, because they're probably not gonna give us a great deal at the asphalt plant. They're, they're in the business of selling asphalt, not buying it.
Right.
Better off, you know, storing that and then using it as we need.
Well, I was hoping we could get a couple bucks a ton at least off of it. That does add up in a day's worth of paving.
But what?
Stockpiling it, yes.
Cost and done for new stuff though was what I. It's more than a couple.
For, for, for new asphalt right now, this year was seventy-one.
Yeah, so. At least a small portion of that, I'm sure we could always find.
There'd be a pretty good pile and yes, we, we did have a good pile of it off of three oh five, the Volin Road from four four eight to the county line. Six years ago or so when they milled that, they did the same thing, they milled it off. It all got hauled to the shop and that was material used up. We used a lot of that material up in twenty nineteen flood for our soft spots, but. So yes, there is, there is good use for.
We should think about just keeping a percentage of it and to just, you know, basically giving it away.
Cause like this quote here with the trucking that was for getting it to concrete materials, hauling it to the shop will probably cost a little more.
All right.
So.
You looking into these different ideas? We just, we don't know unless we try it.
So it's something that I'll probably be bringing back to you guys early spring. I do feel it would, it would help our process of paving go a lot faster, we'd go through less material. And we would end up with a better end product.
All right. Any other questions for Mike while he's here? We had the pleasure of having breakfast with the team this morning, so we gave them a little hurrah for all the stuff they've done this summer. And it was a busy summer and it will be a busy next summer, so.
We're still, uh, we're still going at it as long as the weather stays decent, we're still hauling some gravel and just today we took another bridge out, hoping to have the crane come in next week and, and set a concrete box, so as long as the weather holds out, we'll do another one, but kinda playing with the devil.
Fifty percent chance of anything, right? All right, Mike, thanks for, for coming.
Yep, thank you.
Have a good night.
Thanks, Mike.
We're. Oh, thank you. You too. Uh, we're gonna skinny back to the liquor licenses, we have an answer, it's based on population in the area. So I'm assuming it's like a township population, so obviously Mayfield is not as populated as out by the lake, so that's the difference. So if everybody's good, any other questions on the liquor licenses?
Based on the township population, what's located?
Yes.
I'm sure Mayfield is, is that Mayfield Township?
It would, yep, it was at Mayfield and hence the lower.
And then that Glen. That's not very big either.
No.
So you get out to the lake and all that, you know, you got.
Any other questions on those applications besides the cost differences? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the renewals.
I'd move, uh, I'd move approval of the renewal applications presented.
Second.
So I have a motion by Healy, second by Kettering to approve the liquor license renewals for this year. Further discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed nay. Motion carries five zero. Now, Mr. Better, go ahead. Item number ten.
We have one plat tonight, plat of lots, two, three, four, five, seven, eight, nine and ten. Lake Forest Estates in the west half and the east, in the south half of the southeast quarter. All in section sixteen, township ninety-three north, range fifty-seven west of the fifth principal meridian, Yankton County, South Dakota.
I move approval of the plats. Second.
So I have a motion by Kettering, second by Healy to approve the Lake Forest Estate Estates plat. Further discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed nay. Motion carries five zero. All right, next is IT Services.
As we discussed at the last meeting, we met with the department heads, we added a couple words on HIPAA into the draft and so now we just gotta decide how you wanna move forward.
All right, so would you like us to outline like a deadline for?
Yeah, I think that's basically all I'll need is you wanna give them a month or less or just to get the quotes back in. Seems like this time of year.
Let's see, we meet on December seventh and twenty-first.
Don't we usually have a year-end meeting too?
And we will be scheduling that and we'll talk about that tonight. It is, kinda would be nice to have it done to me before then. Um, but maybe there's different feelings on that.
I think for sure by the. The seventh, is the seventh, for the seventh gonna be too short?
It might be with Thanksgiving, but, but maybe we go for the Friday before the.
Twenty-first, so that'd be December seventeenth.
I think that would be okay.
And that would be.
I guess as long as there's time to.
Review.
Review and have some questions or, because there might be.
And, and I would like for the department leaders to have a look at those as well. My opinion, they have to deal with whoever we are agreeing to hire or how we agree to proceed. I don't have to deal with them.
I think they'd appreciate that.
Do you think we could do it maybe at the deadline on the fifteenth?
Fifteen.
And then possibly on the sixteenth and seventeenth, we could have a department leader meeting.
Sure, definitely.
And just go over and then they would have input for the twenty-first meeting.
Sounds good.
Let's go for December fifteenth. That's pretty much a month, because today's the.
Sixteen, yep, that'll work.
Does that sound good to everybody? Okay, so unless there's changes to Mr. Better's form here, I think that's all you really needed to complete it?
Correct.
Okay.
And we got a number of businesses that are willing to take a look at it, so I think we had at least six already.
Very good. Good.
Sounds like a plan, thank you.
Do you need us to approve this or?
I don't think you have to necessarily approve sending it out.
To bid, okay, sounds good. Thank you. And we are right on time. Julie, come on up. Six forty-five is pretty rare, we're this late into the meeting and we're still on time.
Okay, another chart.
Yes.
It's in our packet, so.
And that's always good for notes, thank you.
You got an extra one. Alter the contract with your health insurance to start January one to follow the deductible year for, just to ease confusion, mainly for the employees. Works, you know, it, it, it just would, I think it would help with their HSA contributions, their deductibles to understand, especially if we change companies, it makes it easier for them to understand how the health insurance realm works. So tonight, last time I was here, I had the Blue Cross Blue Shield quote for a twenty twenty-two January one start date. And now I have also acquired a Vera, just because we signed the contract starting June first, we would have to re-sign a new contract for a January one start date. And there has been, once again, quite a few claims. And, and I included that also in the email. And a Vera has spent sixty-six thousand dollars over what they've collected in premiums, so that has an effect on your renewal. The great thing about doing this in Jan- for a January one start date is we won't have to do it again till next year in December, so it isn't something that we have to redo again in June, so of course it will start January first. Is there any questions? These plans? I tried to get the plans as close, they, they are, I, I don't wanna say identical, because we're, of course, we're not dealing with identical companies, but they are as close to one another as possible and a Vera, of course, is quoting the exact same plans that you currently have. And just in case there is some confusion, the six hundred and eighteen dollars, the, at the bottom of the page, it says a Vera, June twenty twenty-one. The six hundred and eighty, sixty includes the seven hundred and fifty dollar stipend that you gave every employee divided by twelve. So that's actual cost to the county. And for the Blue Cross Blue Shield, that is the lowest cost policy that's being offered. And then, of course, the employees make up the difference.
And what?
And the employees make up the difference. Any questions?
I think I emailed you my only.
Did you get them, the answers from me? I just sent them at like.
Oh, no, no, I didn't. That's fine. The, but they're just, I was just curious why the PPO and the HSA for fifty-five hundred were so close in price.
Okay, I, and it's, and it kinda shocked me too. It's because, you know, typically the PPO. Okay, I and it's and it kind of shocked me too, it's because, you know, typically the PPO has richer benefits. But it has a max out of pocket of seventy-five hundred, where the HSA does not, so of course the insurance company is looking, how much is it gonna cost the consumer and how much is it gonna cost the company? So the company, the HSA, actually, when you're a utilizer, a large utilizer, it costs the company more to insure HSAs, that's why.
Yeah, and and that. And I looked at last year's and they were almost a hundred dollars apart, they were ninety dollars apart, now they've switched together, so it just was different and.
Yeah, Blue Cross Blue Shield definitely um tightened up their increase over, but that quote that we received. In June, for June of twenty twenty-one start was a significant increase, we had a twelve point four five percent increase, whereas this increase is only five percent, so. You know, the.
Only.
I know, I know, um, there, the the increases across the board with all the insurance companies. Has been high. It has not been a year where you see negatives, that happened once in this county.
One.
Long time ago.
Well, about four years ago, you guys had a negative, yeah, four years ago with Blue Cross Blue Shield, we actually had a, they decreased our rate, but I had to, you know, we went back and asked for it and they did, but. Not since then. And not in and no company is having a decrease, it's pretty much all increase, so. Sign the times, sorry. I always get to deliver bad news.
So does anyone have any questions on? What's being presented here?
I mean, I have, I have lots and lots of details, I can send you all the details you want, but. This is, this is kind of the brass tacks.
Are we getting rid of the seven fifty HSA?
Yes. The that HR, it was.
HRA.
A nightmare.
Yeah.
And so.
I just wanted to.
Yep.
Clarify.
Very good clarification, and the answer is yes, we're getting rid of it. So the choice that we have to make and probably at our next meeting, we need to make it December seventh.
Yes.
Is right now essentially our base cost is seven thirty-five a year. For ninety employees.
Currently, yes.
Yep, and so if we choose to switch to Blue Cross Blue Shield. And we agree to pay the seven sixty-four. That's about eight twenty-five, which is a ninety thousand dollar increase.
Yes.
If we choose to renew with Avera. The cost is is six ninety-two.
Correct.
Which would be a decrease of about forty thousand, something like that, a little over forty thousand. So um, feedback from employees that we have gotten is they. Majority feel Blue Cross Blue Shield, they liked better.
I have actually talked to a couple of employees who indicated that they would pay a little more premium out of pocket to have Blue Cross Blue Shield.
That's, that's what I'm hearing as well, so the other option here. Is to instead of paying six, seven sixty-four, is to choose to pay something a little less than that. And let the employee choose which plan they want. So essentially, we come down to the county's gonna contribute this amount, you pick a plan. And that's kind of what we do right now, we've been picking that middle plan.
Okay, that to interrupt, I'm very sorry to interrupt, but the seven hundred. I just before, before we get to ahead, I want to make sure I clarify, the seven hundred and sixty-four dollar premium is the least expensive plan. But it is also the fifty-five hundred dollar HSA. And so in the past, you've had the fifty-five hundred dollar copay plan that has the copay. And then a forty-five hundred dollar HSA plan and a fifty-five hundred dollar HSA plan. And and how it works when the county typically is you pick the least expensive or the middle. And I would suggest you have two plans. The HSA fifty-five hundred and the PPO fifty-five hundred. And just because honestly, if you take a look, the majority of your employees are taking the high deductible plan and the and the fifty-five hundred dollar copay plan. You have thirteen people taking the forty-five hundred dollar plan, but. I I, you know, if you, if you want to slimline, you know, everything, just have the two plans. It is the least premium for the county. If the um employees want to kick in for the fifty-five hundred dollar PPO plan, that is a difference of only. Ten bucks. Excuse me. Yeah, ten, seven hundred and seventy-four oh one versus six hundred, seven hundred and sixty-four dollars. Do you see that, Sherry?
Yeah, I I guess my point to that was even, I mean. And we are responsible for public dollars, this is a ninety thousand dollar increase we're taking, which is, if I did it right, is like twelve percent.
It is twelve point seven five.
Increase um to do this, so and I know, Patty, you said you kind of called around to some other counties, some of them only pay. Eighty percent of premiums, some pay fifty percent, some pay ninety-seven percent, and some pay a hundred percent. So I I do think it is worth having that conversation. Before we make the final choice at some point, I think we need to to vet that out.
I think we, and we talked to at the department head meeting, we. We mentioned that. We didn't have all the answers by any means, but that one, one thing we would discuss is go. If people felt strongly they wanted Blue Cross Blue Shield. Would they be willing to pay the difference or some portion of and? I I think we need to. Maybe see where we all stand or feel and then maybe ping the employees again. Because it was overwhelmingly they wanted Blue Cross Blue Shield in the Ser Valley, did you send that or who's? In the survey. That might change.
If they had to pay some.
Correct.
But they have more choices, they can go to Sanford, they can go to Mayo, they can go to Sioux City. I don't know that Sioux City has an Avera.
They do.
Yet.
They they will, the one of the hospitals except Avera, but. I understand, I I understand completely.
So.
Is that what, I mean, is that? Where I think we're leaning is if we go back, then that difference is made up or a half the difference or some. Anybody have thoughts?
So when you look at that, that's an eighty-five dollar difference essentially per month. That the county would take on, so I think what you're hinting at is if it's eighty bucks, would the county be willing to, or the employee be willing to pick up forty of it? County picks up forty, so that's essentially five hundred bucks.
Or a portion.
Something like that as an example.
My crystal ball says we're looking at double digit increases again next year.
I don't think, I don't, actually, I don't think there'd be a problem. Any employee wanting to.
Well, can I?
You bet.
I don't think there'd be a pro, I don't. I guess this is my feeling, the way we had. The survey and I don't think they'd have a problem.
Paying a little more.
Well, currently, you have forty-four employees who are willing to pay that forty-five dollar and seventeen cent increase. For the the copay plan. And um, the thirty-two employees who are actually taking the high HSA, the high deductible HSA. They receive the money back into their HSA account from the county because it's a savings. Now that won't happen, but the reason that those thirty-two employees is because they don't use their health insurance, you know, they're, so. You um, you know, of the ninety people using the health insurance, forty-four are taking the copay plan, thirteen are taking the forty-five hundred dollar HSA plan. And thirty-two are taking the fifty-five hundred dollar HSA plan, so um. You, they're already putting money, the people that value that PPO are already playing, paying about forty-five dollars and seventeen cents, so you know, that's kind of where you're at right now.
So is there interest to have maybe a second survey done and and ask employees if they're willing to, this is now that we have real numbers. Are you willing to split some of that increase of?
In order to.
Ninety thousand dollars to have the premium healthcare.
Because we went from. We split the savings last year essentially.
Yes. Yes.
So that's seven thirty-five. Really. Is, I have my calculator.
Six hundred and eighteen ten times um ninety times twelve would be your true cost to the health insurance company.
So that's, I'm just trying to do apples to apples, because like I say, I I foresee a ten double digit increase coming next year. I would imagine.
So what are you looking at the um? How much? Just the. Half of the eighty dollars or more than that?
I don't think it'd be any more than. So, Joe, if you took six hundred and eighteen minus the seven sixty-four, that would get you.
Six six seven.
Pushed the wrong button on my fancy calculator.
I was gonna say, do you need my one with the big buttons?
So we're. Actually, what I'm after. Is that what it is, six hundred sixty-seven thousand? So apples, that was, so we're really going.
From six sixty-seven.
To.
Eight twenty-five.
Eight twenty-five.
That's the true cost, had we not given seven fifty back to the employee.
Right.
That's the true increase.
Correct. Oh, the big number, yeah.
Yeah.
I guess.
So it it's a, it's much healthier than.
Than the ninety thousand.
Than just the ninety thousand.
You know, and we're already paying for the, I I don't think would.
So that's a hundred, almost a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. So.
To have Blue Cross Blue Shield.
Yes.
Had we not given the seven fifty, but we gave the seven fifty, so I count that as a true cost to the county because we were willing to.
Yeah.
Do that, so.
No, I counted.
So I think the seven thirty-five should should really be our base, and then going to eight twenty-five. Um, is where we would end up. And it's just how much of that do we want to take on and how much would the employee be willing to to give? On that. So I can work with Valley and we can. Re um, survey, since she's so good at it and I'm not. Help help set up some some form so they can see some real numbers to the county and to them.
Correct.
And then see where everybody falls out from there. But we do need to make a decision next meeting, so Julie can get if we need to adjust. Ready before the end of the year. Well, the only reason, and it's not because I I want to hurry you into paperwork, Blue Cross Blue Shield is very strict, they don't care how big your group is, it's the fifteenth is the deadline.
Okay.
Unfortunately, I can't sweet talk my way out of that one, they won't accept paperwork after the fifteenth. If you can make a decision, we can sign paper whenever, but it just has to be by the fifteenth, so it won't work to wait till the ju, December twenty first meeting. Okay.
So, sounds good.
All right, if you have any questions, you know, if you want to see. They call, it's something called an, you know, OBS, which it is just the, all the details of the plans, but they are identical plans to what they had prior, so.
Yeah, and that was one thing brought up during our department head meeting was that the office, the PPO plan.
It includes, yes, it just.
The Blue Cross includes the, if you had a CT scan at Yankton Medical Clinic and that, whereas the Avera plan did not cover that.
It it um, the Blue Cross Blue Shield covers just like it did prior.
Right, Avera, which is about everything you do when you go into Yankton Medical Clinic.
Correct.
Or some other doctor of similar, so all right, Julie, thank you.
You're very welcome, please feel free to call or email.
Will do. Oh, no, you're good, you're good. All right, so that was insurance quotes, we are now at item thirteen, the last um action item. So I was uh assigned the task to investigate getting some leadership. Training, um, and the specific request was for how to do reviews. Um, so when I was talking to Alternative HR, they sent um some information on training series that they offer. So when I was looking at that training series, I thought, gosh, that kind of looks like a nice little package deal. And so the first page is really. Number two, session two of the first page says evaluating performance and providing feedback. So we can just have that session done. And I had them quote that. And then I asked her to quote sessions one, two, three, and four as a package deal, not session five. I thought the first four probably would be a good place to start if we wanted to do a package, and so what she had envisioned was. January, we do session one, February, session two, and then we proceed down that, because sometimes too much training at once. Is not a prudent deal, um, so that gives people time to practice it and and all that sorts of deals, so when you get down to the cost. Let's see. The cost for just doing the one session um was a almost twenty-eight hundred dollars. And that would be their time to travel down here to give a morning session. They would break for lunch and then do an afternoon session, so if you had a department that had two supervisors, you could split and not have a vacant office. The second would be sessions one through four, and that's about ten thousand seven hundred. So I think there is a little break there because you're buying four sessions or four days essentially, um. So I know I've gotten, when I sent all this information out to um folks who would probably attend it, there was a lot of support for trying to get folks some training. In uh, being a leader. Giving feedback, uh, addressing issues, et cetera, especially when we have. A few newer uh folks in those positions, even as old dogs benefit from. Some refresher courses in how to approach things a little more tactfully. So any questions on that, now this is the company that reviewed our handbook, um, I know they do a lot of work with counties. Uh, in our area. Any questions?
We talked about trying to partner up with some of the neighboring counties to try to spread the cost a little bit. Over multiple counties instead of us just shoulder in the bill for this.
She did say the class size, you can't get too big of a class size. Um, you you know, she said, obviously, you don't want two hundred people in a room because you can't practice the skills they're trying to teach. On that, and and when I ballparked. I was guessing maybe twenty to twenty-five at the most, but during our our team meeting of the department leaders. There were far more supervisors in the sheriff than I anticipated, he listed off. At least another three or four that I didn't think of, and so I think when we come down to it, I think we'll have a good attendance to many of these sessions. Than that, I mean, we can certainly consider that.
I think the intent, based off the discussion at department head meeting, would be department heads and then the deputies. And you know, anybody in leadership roles within those offices would probably be candidates for it.
It would be nice if we could uh, search out some type of online course, I know, for example, the sheriff's office, I mean, they're never gonna be able to, all in the jail. Never gonna be able to attend all these because they're running constant operations, I just um, I'm wondering, especially this time of year, if everybody who needs to go to it is gonna be able to. Attend. So what are we looking at, the single class or what's?
Well, that's what I I was tasked with with searching that out, and then I expanded the search to include the package. Just to see what it would be. So I am open to feedback.
I would be supportive of the package.
Which package, one through four?
Doing the one through four for the ten thousand and change. All right, I just think the, you can be overtrained, I guess, there's, but I don't. I don't think this would be overdoing it, especially some of the um, like Sherry said, some of the newer people in positions we have. And then some people that have been in the same position for quite some time, it never hurts to kind of have a refresher and. And on top of it, build kind of a relationship with um, with Alternative HRD too, and. I'd be curious to hear some feedback afterwards from our employees that attend um, on their thought on. Of the company itself.
The other nice thing about having. One presentation on something is consistency across your organization, we don't have HR. So um, and it's good to do online courses, and I know some folks are are doing those, they'll say, well, I took this leadership course or. So um, and it's good to do online courses, and I know some folks are, are doing those, they'll say, well, I took this leadership course or, or something. But sometimes the consistency of the message for how you approach it becomes more cohesive across your organization. When it's, when you're doing it together, um, and it's, it's from the same teacher to some degree. I do think there's an advantage to that, and I love online learning and all of that, but I tell you. The training I do to keep up my certificate, I get far more in person.
I, I guess I agree, given that we don't have an HR and we've had some problems in the past, and people don't seem to be able to deal. With each other. I think that some training would be good.
No, we can certainly start with just number two, and if that goes well, I, we can say, well, let's do one, three, and four. Um.
But then do we get the price break?
You know, I thi- I think they would re-quote it for just the three and give us a little bit off. It's, it wasn't a huge price break, but, cause they do have travel and all of that.
I guess I would be more supportive of. That um. And see how it goes, and if we wanna offer some more training down the line. Do that, mo- most of our, our team is seasoned leaders. I mean, we do have a new, a few new ones, but. By far, most of our. People we have department heads have been doing this a long time, and it's always good to get refreshers, but. I don't, I'd rather start out uh, with the lower amount, I mean, ten thousand dollars, it's pretty significant, especially not budgeting for it.
Ten, a hundred dollars employee, that's pretty cheap. Didn't I?
I.
Yeah, sorry.
Twenty five dollars employee per session. I, I think we definitely uh, get the benefit of the training and we have. Much money on. Training even as long as I've been here. Most organizations do, right?
And I, I go back to the, just lack of HR and it's overwhelmingly been brought to our attention. Um, different concerns that have been brought up, uh, requests for, for hired full-time HR. And I think all of us can agree that we're probably not gonna hire a full-time HR person this year. Or in twenty twenty two. Something maybe we work towards, but this is a step in, in satisfying what the employees have been asking for.
So given that, at this point, we can certainly entertain a motion um, to do one or all.
As far as HR support too, uh, don't we have it, or maybe it, we need to do a better job of advertising it to the employees? Can't they use this alternative HR for conflict resolution? I thought that was. Was part of that uh, when we did the handbook, and I don't know if the employees realize that. I know we don't have in-house uh, HR, but. You know, we should have the ability, I believe we do, to reach out um, to this company when necessary. So I just don't know if that's been brought to the employees' knowledge, that if they try, if they go through their steps and they need to go. Go somewhere else, but that's an option for them.
Yeah, and we do, we do have that available today, I, you know, and again, it, it goes back to building that relationship, so you're comfortable with the person on the other end of the phone. Um, I think that would help that as well, um, for, for folks to call up with a ten-minute question and. Get some reassurance that they're, they're interpreting it correctly. Um, so you're absolutely right, Dan, that is an important resource, but I, I do think it's been under, underutilized.
Yeah, and that was part of my point of getting. Getting our employees in front of it, Alternative HRD and getting a relationship with them, and if, you know, if we wanna take baby steps and go. You know, just session two, and then if that is a success, expand, I'm okay with it, but I.
Exactly.
I'm supporting.
That's where I would be at.
I'll do all of the above.
Thoughts on all or one? Don's an all, Wanda?
I'm leaning towards all.
Okay. Dan's a one, Joe?
I, I would go for all.
Okay, so I would entertain a motion, given the consensus stated.
And that's a ten thousand?
Yeah, well, we, I mean, we haven't even seen what kinda, I'm sure these will be good classes, but. I guess I don't see the harm in seeing how they are and what value we're getting out of them. And if they're good, then moving toward that rather than just, you know, going all in right from the beginning. You know, I'm not necessarily opposed to that, but I just uh. Would like to get some feedback on how, how good these classes are prior to us. You know, spending that kinda change.
So with that said, um. I would certainly entertain a motion at this time, and I, and I understand where Dan's coming from, let's test the waters before we jump in whole hog, is essentially what you're saying.
Yes.
So if we do that, we start with one or do we start with two?
I'm, I'm fine with two, and then if.
Okay.
If it works out and. You know, it's good training.
Which two?
For.
So it, it'd essentially be session number two on that first page. Because that's, that's what Don had brought up a few meetings ago, is to try and help people with these reviews that they have to do, and. And I, that would be a good introductory course.
And, you know, I also believe the county association offers a leadership actual training for substantially less than this. I know, I think Michelle has actually uh, gone through that academy, when we, we pay thousands of dollars a year to these associations. That offer a lot of this stuff for free.
I think some of that stuff, we still have to pay.
Yeah, yeah, some, some of it.
You know, but you have to remember that cost to her was for one person, whereas we're probably gonna get twenty five to thirty people covered with this one cost. So, I would certainly entertain a motion to approve to pay for session two, just to get this going in a positive direction.
I would make a motion to approve session two. Of the Alternative HRD LLC uh, to give.
How about a not to exceed?
What?
Not to exceed twenty eight hundred or something like that.
That's fine, not to exceed twenty eight hundred dollars.
Okay.
So I have a motion by Fox, second by Healy to approve uh, twenty eight hundred dollars, not to exceed twenty eight hundred dollars. For session two from Alternative HRD. And essentially, we'll get some feedback for how that goes, and we will revisit this, the meeting after that. I will make sure we get that on the agenda for them. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, nay? Motion. Motion carries. Sorry about that, Don, I cut you off. So, let's see, I'm gonna write session two.
Too, but if they advise not skipping, or will they kinda have that in here?
Say what?
Wanna be out of order.
Yeah, I'm sure they can, they can accommodate. So we are at item fourteen, which is public comment. Would anyone care to make a public comment? There being none, we have closed public comment, and commissioner updates is the last thing. Anyone want to share? On Friday, Don and I are gonna meet with our three legislators um, about the upcoming session, so if there's anything you wanna make sure. That we mention during that, let one of us know. Three thirty, I think, pretty sure, yep, it's three thirty. On Friday, um.
I've actually been in contact with a couple of our legislators, and it sounds like uh, there's a potential for. Um, some money for projects, and the advice given was shovel-ready projects. We're gonna take precedence, so if we have any of those that uh, we could have in the pipeline. It was advised to have those ready to go.
We got a bridge.
Yeah, e- exactly.
Or two.
That's exactly what uh, what was advised, is because some of these dollars need to be spent up. There's a, there's a lot throughout the state and. The feeling, at least initially, is those are gonna take priority, and so uh, it might be wise for us to have some of those. Smaller projects ready to go, so if something comes out, we can put it in, apply engineering studies. All of that are done, and it's just on standby.
So are you thinking specific, like bridges, or I mean, we've got a five-year highway plan, like paving and stuff?
Yeah, I, I don't think paving would probably, I, I'm thinking uh, probably bridges, maybe, maybe some uh. Smaller road projects too, I mean, because everybody's gonna be applying, a bigger project is probably. Not as likely as a lot of smaller, and that's just the initial thought that uh. So. That was, that was passed along to me, so.
Okay, anything else? We've got Thanksgiving next week, and the county building is closed Thursday and Friday, so folks know that. Oh, meeting, final meeting of the year, let's take a look. So, the week of twenty seven through thirty one, which is the last week of twenty twenty one already. We need to have a final meeting in there, now drainage is usually Tuesday evenings, and we're never sure if we have a drainage meeting or not. So, do, can, do you want like um, a day meeting, an evening meeting? Have we, we've done.
Can you, yeah, a morning, yeah.
How.
Or at one.
Or at one, how, how is your schedule?
I know I can't do it on the thirty first.
And yeah.
Engagement with Mr. Swenson.
We would like to do it earlier that week than later, just so Patty can get all her transfers done.
Twenty eighth, would that work?
So what times?
One o'clock.
With one o'clock?
Well, and Wanda probably, the twenty eighth at one o'clock. What works with you?
It really, it doesn't last long, I mean, if that's all we do is end your stuff.
Because we have to do a sign, yep, a signing of dollars, any transfers.
I think that would work.
So one o'clock on the twenty eighth. Gosh, I can't believe I'm right in December. Year end.
Already.
Don, our birthdays are rolling around here pretty soon. Another trip around the sun.
Are we? Doing some kind of holiday thing?
We were hoping for January, okay, so we've got some time to kinda plan that around. I know Patty had some ideas here. So.
I do have a question on the um. Alternative HR, where do you wanna take that other? I know if I called the state auditor, I know what he would say.
What would he say, commission budget? Because we approved it. And I, I think that's fine, I'm, it's, it's county money, so it's.
Yep.
That'll be good, anything else? With that. Entertain a motion, oh, items for next meeting. Insurance is, that's, and then I'm assuming Mr. F. Icoff will be on. And then. It'll be too early for the IT services, that's the next meeting.
Haven't done anything more about the uh, Christmas celebration.
In January, last time we added it, checkers. I remember it was all snowy.
Be on the agenda if we're gonna do it.
Yeah, yeah, we should decide, let's put that on the next meeting to decide that as well. That, that gives people time to plan. All right, entertain a motion to adjourn.
A move.
Second.
Motion by Healy, second by Kettering, to adjourn, all in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed, nay? Motion carries.